Session Day twenty dash zero twenty-one. I would ask that you would please join us in standing with for the pledge by the opening of trailer by Councilmember Beulah.
And to the Republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening with praise and thanksgiving for all your love and mercy and for the abundance that you have provided our nation. Our country is at a critical and fragile point. We each need to realize that many problems stem from trying to do things in our own power. But the root cause is that we each need to have a personal relationship with you to change our hearts. We cannot move forward effectively without you and your blessing. We need your guidance to ensure that level heads prevail. Please grant our leaders and this council the wisdom to come together to make decisions that result in lasting and meaningful change and justice for all. We need your direction to prevent us from making the mistakes of the past. We need your strength to live each day for you and to make a difference. We ask that our voices speak your words of peace and kindness. And most of all, we thank you for all that you do and will continue to do. These blessings, we ask in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Councilman Beulah, for those words. Agenda item number four, consideration of petitions, applications, appointments, and nominations. Executive appointment, advisory board on aging may have a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve the executive tree appointments of Arlene Callender, Mark Di Domenico, Susan Haviland, Heather Murphy to the advisory board on aging.
You have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Schroes. I move this second to approve the reappointments of Arlene Callender, Mark Di Domenico, Susan Haviland, Heather Murphy to the advisor group board on aging. Any discussion? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Janjer Dano.
Aye.
Mr. Schroes.
Aye.
Mr. Wagner.
Mr. Beulah.
Aye.
Being seven votes in the affirmative and zero in the negative, the appointments are hereby approved. Agenda number five, special presentations. Again, this evening, it's our pleasure to welcome Dr. Moy, our Harford County Health Officer, for his COVID-19 update. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you, Council President Vicente and county council members. Again, I'm here to give the week's COVID health update. I'll begin with a review of the COVID-19 numbers, but basically, all the metrics for the state in general and different counties specifically continue to be good. As of today, June sixteenth, worldwide, over eight million cases with four hundred forty thousand deaths. In the United States, over two million cases with one hundred sixteen thousand deaths. In Maryland, sixty-two thousand thirty-two cases and two thousand eight hundred fifty-one deaths. And in Harford County, one thousand twenty-three cases and fifty-six confirmed deaths. The metrics being followed include the number of new COVID cases, the number of new COVID deaths, the number of hospitalizations, the number of ICU beds used, and the positivity rate of the testing being done. So just to briefly go over those metrics, the number of new COVID cases. So instead of taking a point in time, we're looking at the average number of daily cases over the past two weeks from June the first to June fourteenth. And we're comparing that with the average number of daily cases for the preceding two-week period from May eighteenth to May thirty-first. So in Maryland, the average daily number of cases from May eighteenth to May thirty-first was nine hundred ninety-eight cases per day. And then from June one to June fourteenth, it was six hundred thirty-seven cases per day, and that represents a thirty-six percent decrease for the state. In Harford County, the average daily number of cases during the last two weeks of May was fourteen cases per day, and during the first two weeks of June, nine cases per day. And that also represents a thirty-six percent decrease in Harford County. Then looking at the number of new COVID deaths, we did the same thing, looked at the average daily number of COVID deaths over the two-week period in June and the two-week period in the preceding two weeks in May. And what we found is in Maryland, the average daily number of deaths in May was thirty-eight deaths per day compared with twenty-nine deaths per day in June, and that represents a twenty-four percent decrease in Maryland. And in Harford County, our numbers are small. We don't have that many deaths. The average daily number of deaths in May was one point two deaths per day compared with zero point six deaths per day in June. And although these numbers are small, they still represent a fifty percent decrease. Then looking at the number of hospitalizations, that's also been on a steady downward trend. And looking at the average daily hospitalizations during the last two weeks of May, that number was one thousand three hundred twenty-seven hospitalizations as compared with nine hundred ninety hospitalizations per day during the first two weeks of June. That's a twenty-five percent decrease. And finally, the state's positivity rate, which again reflects the number of positive COVID tests compared with all COVID tests done in the state, that's another metric being carefully followed. And the lower the positivity rate, the better, preferably under twelve percent. Maryland's positivity rate today was six point two percent, and Harford County's positivity rate was even better at three percent. One area Harford County can improve on is the percent of the entire population tested for COVID-19. And as of yesterday, Harford County had tested five point four percent of the county's population, while the state average was seven point one percent. So we're working on a testing plan to try to expand testing to be sure that everyone who wants or needs a COVID test can get one. Finally, to round out our Harford County numbers, of the eleven largest Maryland jurisdictions that have had at least one thousand COVID cases, Harford County continues to have the lowest number of COVID cases per capita at about four hundred cases per one hundred thousand people, and that's compared to a state average of over a thousand cases per one hundred thousand people. And we also have the lowest number of COVID deaths per capita at twenty-two deaths per one hundred thousand people compared to the state average of forty-seven deaths per one hundred thousand people. So reviewing these numbers, which have been pretty stable lately, summarizes most of what I can share in today's update. Most of the activity over the last week has been over the interpretation of the many social distancing and other rule changes that have been sent down to us by the state. And I know that you've been working closely with Marcy Austin, our Deputy Health Officer, and her team in trying to understand the nuances of all those rules. Keeping up with the state's reopening rules has been challenging, as there have been thirty-five governor's executive orders and nineteen Maryland Department of Health Secretary's orders related to COVID-19 since March. So that each, seems like every week, we have a new set of rules we have to follow, and it becomes very challenging to interpret. So to close, I'll go over one more question that we've been hearing a lot lately, and that's, will there be a second wave of infection, and how much longer will COVID be the problem that it is? So of course, of course, no one really knows if there's going to be a second wave, but we know that other pandemics, like the nineteen eighteen pandemic, had a second wave. In fact, they also had a third wave. So it's definitely possible that we'll see a spike. And with the estimates that only five percent of the general population has been infected with the COVID-19 virus so far, and that gives them probably some level of immunity, but only five percent, we're still a long way away from the necessary sixty to seventy percent immunity level needed in the community for what's called herd immunity. But even experts in the country, like Dr. Anthony Fauci himself, says that a second wave is not a sure thing. He says that if you approach things in the proper way, following social distancing and continuing to wear a mask, face mask in public until the vaccine is developed, the second wave may be avoided. So just to remind everyone about the recent Lancet article I mentioned last week that showed the chance of transmission when people are not social distancing, when they're less than six feet apart from each other, the chance of transmission is as high as thirteen percent. But that drops to about two percent when people are social distancing at at least six feet apart. The chance of viral transmission without a face mask is greater than seventeen percent compared to three percent when you wear a face mask. One last word about vaccines. So researchers around the world are developing more than one hundred thirty-five vaccines against the coronavirus. The vaccines that you've probably heard typically require lots of years of research and testing before they're released to the general public, but scientists are pushing very hard to produce a safe and effective vaccine by next year. Here's a summary of the vaccine testing process. First, you got to have preclinical testing. That's when the scientists give the vaccine to animals, such as mice or monkeys, just to see if it produces an immune response. Then you have phase one safety trials. That's when the scientists give the vaccine to a small number of people to test it for safety. Then you do phase two expanded trials, and that's when the scientists give the vaccine to hundreds of people grouped by demographics, like according to different age groups, to see if the vaccine acts differently in them. Then there's the phase three efficacy trials. That's when scientists give the vaccine to thousands of people, and they wait to see how many become infected compared with volunteers who receive a placebo. So these trials determine that the vaccine can actually protect people against the coronavirus. And what the National Institute of Health is encouraging is that these phase three trials test at least thirty thousand people to see if this thing works. And then finally, you have FDA approval that reviews the trial results and may decide whether to approve the vaccine or not. So in the United States, there's a special program called Operation, the Operation Warp Speed Program, and that's been developed to provide selected projects, a lot of money, billions of dollars of federal funding, even before there's definitive proof that the vaccines work, but just to help push it along. So five companies have gotten monies from the federal government so far in Operation Warp Speed. AstraZeneca, working with the University of Oxford, is already beginning phase three trials now, hoping to have a vaccine ready by the end of 2020, end of this year. Moderna is the second company, and they've announced it will be starting phase three trials in July, hoping to have vaccines ready by early 2021. Pfizer is in phase two. Johnson &amp; Johnson is in the preclinical phase, and Merck is in the preclinical phase. So until a vaccine is developed, and you know, hopefully sometime next year, you still have to continue social distancing, wear face masks in public, have to do that to try to avoid that second wave. So even though we are in the reopening phase right now, again, the virus is still there. Most people don't have immunity until that vaccine is developed. We still need to be careful. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Moy. Councilmembers? Councilman Janjer Dano?
Thank you, Dr. Moy, for all the information and continued update to the council. I did hear you talk about the fact if you wear a mask and the percentages decrease, is that all based on indoor? And is there a difference between indoor and outdoor and distancing and so forth?
So I believe this article, I'll have to check, I think it was indoor, but it's generally accepted, as you know, that outdoors is much safer because the viral particles are dispersed a lot easier and a lot faster outdoors. But I think this, I think this article was primarily indoors, but I can double check.
Okay. Second question, has all of the outbreak cases in the nursing facilities in Harford County been contained? What is the status on those and the people that were infected? Are they, is that all clear now, or what are we seeing on that?
So here's my understanding of what's happening in Harford County. We have six nursing homes. Two of them had outbreaks. It was a lot of intensive work with those two. My understanding is they have been contained in those two. There was a lot of testing done. There were a lot of infections in those two, but that those two are under control. What I understand as of now, the other four, as far as I understand, and it can change at any time, the other four have done amazingly well. As far as I know, no outbreaks in the other four. And we got to keep our fingers crossed on that because most nursing homes have some kind of outbreak. So we're very fortunate with the others.
Third question, I know there's been some issues with testing. The Upper Chesapeake is no longer doing it. They're referring everybody up to the emissions center, but I think you have to get a doctor's note to get it tested, and there are some doctors locally that are doing it in their office. But I do know also that a couple people have tested negative three or four times, and then the fourth time they tested positive, they were sick that whole time, but it didn't come back positive until the fourth time. They wound up in intensive care in a hospital. They did recover. They are fine. But also, just because you had to test now, that might not help you two months down the road. You might have to get tested again, even if you were negative now, you could catch it from somebody else and be down the road. But they're, when they test that, they're not testing for the antibodies as well, if you have the antibodies in your system, correct?
Right. So there's two types of tests. The one test is the nasal test, the big Q-tip test. That's the diagnostic test. That's the one that tells you if you have a viral load at the time of the test. The problem with that test, and that's the gold standard test for diagnosis, but the problem with that test, as I kind of mentioned, I think in one of the other updates, is that it has a thirty percent false negative rate. That means thirty percent of the time, that test may failed, but maybe negative. Later on, it could turn out positive. So obviously, the accuracy of the test needs to probably be improved upon because there's a lot of people having negative tests that turn out positive. That's the diagnostic test. The second type of test is the blood test, serologic test. That one doesn't tell you if you have an infection at the moment. It tells you if you've ever had the infection in the past. What they hope to see from that is, if you've had it in the past, maybe you have some level of immunity, so you might be somewhat protected. But even then, they're not sure how strong that protection is or how long that protection lasts. So obviously, what's happening is you've got two tests, they're in their early stages, they're not a hundred percent accurate, and that's why people are getting all kinds of unusual results that are hard to interpret. Hopefully, over time, these tests get better.
Thank you, Dr. Moy. That's all I have at this time. I appreciate all your updates.
Thank you, Janjer Dano. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, Dr. Moy, again, I want to thank you for all that you've done in your position. I know you're going to be there for a couple of more months yet, but we are going to be on our summer schedule here soon. So we won't be having council meetings or legislative sessions for the next two months, but I know that we will remain in constant contact. And you're right, Ms. Austin has been outstanding, and Mr. Nelson and Mr. Captain Gonzalez as well. We've all worked very well together, of course, with the administration and everyone else involved. So appreciate all you're doing. Hope to see you soon.
Thank you.
Commission on Veterans Affairs Annual Report. Council, it's our pleasure to welcome Mr. Brown and Mr. Hayden. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, sir. Council President Vicente, members of the county council, good evening. My name is Bob Brown, and I'm the chairperson of the Harford County Commission on Veterans Affairs. With me today virtually is Hayden Anthony, Vice Chair. My purpose this evening is to provide you with the synopsis of the Harford County Commission on Veterans Affairs Annual Report on behalf of the members of the commission. You should have already received the full report, so what I will do is provide the highlights of the events and accomplishments from the past year. First off, we'd like to thank County Executive Barry Glassman for his service to Harford County's nineteen thousand veterans and the support of the Veterans Commission. It is through his support that the Veterans Commission continues to provide service and assistance to veterans and their families. So we also like to thank you and the county council for your support with all the veterans' inquiries, the referrals, attendance at veterans' events, and your guidance and recommendations. On behalf of the members of the Veterans Commission, we also want to thank Councilman Andre Johnson, the Veterans Commission Coordinator and Liaison. Councilman Johnson's office is the focal point for the questions from the veterans. He, along with his legislative aide, Rachel Peterson, ensure that inquiries are quickly routed to the commission members for resolution. It goes without saying, this past year, and especially the past few months, have been unique and challenging due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Fortunately, we have witnessed support, cooperation, innovation, and collaboration of local, state, and federal agencies to meet the diverse needs of the Harford County veterans. Our mission and vision, having to guide on, our members have followed throughout the past year to maintain and in fact, improve the support and assistance provided to veterans. Our mission, to advocate for our veterans and their families and connect them with resources through outreach and education. The vision, a Harford County community that is responsive to the needs of veterans and their families. As you know, the Veterans Commission is composed of twelve volunteer members appointed by the county executive and one liaison coordinator member appointed by the county council. In addition, there are three ex-official members appointed by the county executive to represent Harford Community College and Education, Aberdeen Proving Ground, and the Harford County Chamber of Commerce. There are also associate members who provide support and assistance on various projects. Commission members were appointed last year for a four-year term, and their names are in the full report. Our members worked on various special areas and projects aligned with our bylaws, duties, and responsibilities this past year, including information for veterans, programs and outreach, advising the county executive, and public events and recognition. Most members serve on multiple work groups and often collaborate with outside agencies to better serve veterans. There are many events and programs that the Veterans Commission was involved with during the past year. In the interest of time, I'd like to highlight the major event of the year, our Annual Resource Fair. The Annual Resource, Veterans Resource Fair was held on November ninth, 2019, at the Bel Air Armory. The event was attended by nearly five hundred veterans, family members, and guests. We had thirty-eight organizations and agencies providing information and activities that included virtual reality demonstrations, benefits and health assistance, social services, and even had a therapy pony and comfort dog demonstrations. A free lunch was served, and a seventy-inch flat panel TV was the grand prize for an attending veteran. But importantly, the Veterans Resource Fair opening ceremony honored the memory and accomplishments of Harford County's only native-born Medal of Honor recipient, Sergeant Alfred B. Hilton, an African-American Civil War soldier and hero who distinguished himself by an act of valor at the Battle of New Market Heights. Major General Mitchell Kilgoe, the senior commander of Aberdeen Proving Ground, opened the ceremony as a guest speaker, and County Executive Barry Glassman then recognized Sergeant Hilton's heroic actions in the Civil War by presenting Miss Evelyn Byrd, niece of Sergeant Hilton and also an Army veteran, with an encased U.S. flag. Harford County Director of Government and Community Relations Cindy Mumbi was instrumental in promotion and marketing of the event. The 2020 Resource Fair is scheduled for October thirty-first at the Bel Air Armory, and the theme of this year's fair is the Year of the Woman Veteran. This past year, commission members assisted veterans and their family members, providing information and referrals in such areas as access to VA healthcare, veterans disability and compensation benefits, PTSD assistance and referrals, homeless veteran help, funerals and bereavement, hospital and in-home visits, burial information, recreational activities, adaptive devices and housing modifications, transportation, legal assistance, assistance and coordination with county agencies. And this is important because a lot of times, some of our veterans, they don't quite qualify for VA benefits, so our county agencies are able to step in and pick up the slack and take care of that for them. We definitely count on them. And employment opportunities. In the full report, we've listed the twenty-four activities and events that occurred over the past year. Also in the past year, we have significantly increased our collaboration and partnering with the federal and Maryland Department of Veterans Affairs and the local chapters of the DAV, American Legion, and VFW. Guest speakers at our monthly Veterans Commission meetings covered a variety of topics for information and awareness, include county agencies and programs and how they currently support veterans, Soldier for Life Transition Assistance Program at Aberdeen Proving Ground, six eight eight eighth, which is known as a six triple eight Central Postal Directory Battalion, an all-black female WAC battalion that during World War II was responsible for eliminating a two-year backlog in male. That's seventeen million pieces of male in six months. They were the first and only all-black, all-female World War II unit. They are now being considered for the Congressional Gold Medal. Veteran hiring and opportunities from local businesses and the Susquehanna workforce, Harford County Library, Veteran Book Group. An overview of the reboot Combat Recovery Program, which is a twelve-week trauma healing course designed to help combat veterans and their families recover from the spiritual and moral wounds of war. And thank you, Councilman Beulah, for bringing this event to our attention. We had three members at the graduation. For the upcoming year, our goals are to conduct and expand the Annual Resource Fair to reach more veterans and their families, partner with Aberdeen Proving Ground to assist transitioning military members and their families, find those resources to help ease that transition to civilian life, respond to the needs and requests of veterans by quickly finding resources, assistance, and guidance, participate in events when possible, such as parades, Memorial Day events, APG Retiree Day, Veteran Day observances, and Reis across America. We want to continue to reach out to businesses to publicize openings and opportunities for veterans. We plan to partner with one or more veteran service organizations such as the Veterans Benefits, to conduct, rather, to conduct an outreach activity, such as the Veterans Benefits and Claims and Health Information Fair, which is separate from the Resource Fair. We had this planned for this year, it was actually scheduled to go off in August, and we're partnering with federal and state VA. This would have been one of the largest and one of the first veterans' benefits symposiums in the state. We hope to do that next year. In conclusion, I want to thank the county council and all who have supported, assisted, and guided the Veterans Commission. Through these challenging and complex times, the Harford County Commission on Veterans Affairs will continue to honor and assist our veteran heroes and their families in their time of need. Sir, this concludes my presentation pending your questions.
Well done, Mr. Hayden. Would you like to add anything? You didn't unmute his mic, but I could tell by his actions he answers now. Councilman, this is your time for questions. Councilman Johnson, I'd like to start with you. Do you have anything, sir?
No, sir, I don't have anything. I just have a statement that it's my honor and my pleasure to work with the commission along with the chair and the vice chair. This is right down my alley, and the Veterans Commission is definitely, for this county, the tip of the spear when it comes to soldiers for life, and they ought to be commended for their service and dedication to all the many veterans that we have in this county. So I thank them, I applaud them, and I look forward to working with them in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Anyone else? Mr. Beulah?
Well, just a statement, I would like to also thank the Veterans Administration for all that they do for all the veterans. Being a veteran myself, I've actually called on them a couple of times in the past, and so I just want to... so I just want to say thank you, job well done, you're accomplishing the mission, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beulah. Anyone else? Bob, Mr. Hayden, we appreciate your service, continued service, I should say, to the veterans of Hartford County and across the country, so we appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Agenda item number six, approval of minutes. Order update, June 9th, 2020. Public hearing, June 9th, 2020. Legislative Day 20-020, June 9th, 2020. Are there any corrections to the minutes? There being no corrections, the minutes stand approved. Agenda item number seven, introduction and consideration of resolutions. Resolution 017-20, performance and operational audits fiscal year 2021. May I have a motion?
Mr. President. Mr. Woods. Move the approved Resolution 017-20, performance and operational audits.
Thank you, ma'am. Second. Thank you, Mr. Schroes. Moved and seconded to approve Resolution 017-20. Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Woods?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Schroes?
Aye.
Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
You unmuted your mic, sir.
Yep. Go on there.
Is that an aye or a nay?
Aye.
Mr. Beulah?
Aye.
Thank you. There being seven votes in the affirmative and zero in the negative, Resolution 017-20 is hereby approved. Mr. Woods, I'd like you to read Resolution 018-20 into the record for introduction, and due to the timing and nature of this resolution, it will be considered this evening.
Thank you, Mr. President. Resolution 018-20, search committee, county health officer, introduced by Council President Vincent. Resolution to establish a search committee to secure applicants for the position of county health officer in order that the County Council may make a recommendation to the Secretary of the Department of Health.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. May I have a motion?
Mr. President. Mr. Woods. Move the approved Resolution 018-20.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Schroes. Moved and seconded to approve Resolution 018-20, search committee for the county health officer. Is there any discussion? Mr. Kearney, I don't know if you want to add anything at this time?
No, sir.
Good. Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Woods?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Schroes?
Aye.
Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Beulah?
Aye.
Thank you. There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, Resolution 018-20 is hereby approved. Agenda item number eight, introduction and consideration of amendments. Amendments 1 through 5 to Bill 20-012, fiscal year 21 CPI bonds. May I have a motion?
Mr. President. Mr. Woods. Move to approve. Amendments 1 through 5 to Bill 20-012 FY21 CPI bonds.
You have a second?
Second.
Schroes. Moved and seconded to approve the amendments 1 through 5 to Bill 20-012. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Woods?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Schroes?
Aye.
Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Beulah?
Aye.
Thank you. There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, amendments 1 through 5 to Bill 20-012 is hereby approved. Amendments 1 through 20 to Bill 20-014, revised prior bond bills. May I have a motion?
Mr. President. Mr. Woods. I move to approve amendments 1 through 20 to Bill 20-014, revised prior bond bills.
You have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Schroes. Moved and seconded to approve amendments 1 through 20 to Bill 20-014. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Woods?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Schroes?
Aye.
Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Beulah?
Aye.
Thank you. There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, amendments 1 through 20 to Bill 20-014 is hereby approved. Agenda item number nine, call for final reading of bills. A Bill 20-012, fiscal year 21 CPI bonds as amended, may I have a motion?
Mr. President. Mr. Woods. I move the approved Bill Number 20-012 FY21 CPI bonds as amended.
Thank you, ma'am. Second?
Second.
Mr. Schroes. Moved and seconded to approve Bill 20-012 as amended. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Woods?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Schroes?
Aye.
Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Beulah?
Aye.
Seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, Bill 20-012 as amended is hereby approved. Bill 20-013, 2021 water bonds. May I have a motion?
Mr. President. Mr. Woods. Move to approve Bill 20-013, 2021 water bonds.
You have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Schroes. Moved and seconded to approve Bill 20-013. Counsel, is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Woods?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Schroes?
Aye.
Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Beulah?
Aye.
Thank you. There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero votes in the negative, Bill 20-013 is hereby approved. Bill 20-014, revised prior bond bills as amended. May I have a motion?
Mr. President. Mr. Woods. I move to approve Bill 20-014, revised prior bond bills as amended.
You have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Schroes. Moved and seconded to approve Bill 20-014 as amended. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Woods?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Schroes?
Aye.
Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Beulah?
Aye.
Thank you. There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero votes in the negative, Bill 20-014 as amended is hereby approved. Agenda item number 10, enrollment of bills. The enrolled copies of bills, Bill 20-0112, fiscal year 21 CPI bonds as amended, Bill 20-013, 2021 water bonds, Bill 20-014, revised prior bond bills as amended, is certified as being the text finally passed. Agenda item number 11, business. Counsel recommendation. Acting Health Officer effective September 1st. Mr. Woods?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move to approve the Counsel's recommendation to the State of Marcy Austin as acting health officer effective September 1, 2020.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Schroes. It's moved and seconded to approve our acting health officer, Ms. Marcy Austin. And at this time, is there any discussion? Mr. Wagner?
So, I know we have to have somebody who has a MD behind her name when they're appointed. Who, I mean, in this instance, who has that?
As acting, that's not necessary.
Not necessary?
No. But when we do the hiring process, the health officer will either have to be, or the deputy will have to have a medical degree.
Right. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Ms. Austin, are you with us now?
Yes, I'm here.
Well, good evening. I'm going to start out by saying it has truly, in this unique situation, been a pleasure working with you. You and I have almost been like on speed dial for the last couple of months, I guess, and more so in the last month, but I truly appreciate your willingness to be able to take the calls no matter when and work with your team here in Hartford County and at the state level, and also Captain Gonzalez from the Sheriff's Office and Mr. Nelson from the State Police. But I just wanted to open the floor up for you as we move forward and maybe have a few comments from you.
Yes, thank you, Counsel President Vincenti. Yes, I truly appreciate your vote of confidence and the support of the County Council, and in honor of Dr. Moy and our staff, I will step up to the position of acting health officer when Dr. Moy retires, and I'll also assist you in any way with the recruitment for his replacement. I just wanted to thank Dr. Moy because he has been my mentor over the last eight years. There were days I felt that certainly he taught me enough by now, and then there was more teaching. So he's truly amazing, probably an impossible act to follow. So over the last few months, we've been incredibly busy. We've tried our best to work through this extraordinary time, but I must say that Hartford County has done an amazing job abiding by the restrictions and rigid guidelines throughout the ordeal, and like Dr. Moy said, there have been many, many guidelines, many, many orders that we've tried to tackle. And yes, I haven't screened your calls yet, Mr. Vincenti. You do call quite often, and I'm happy to work with you.
Well, we spoke with HR today to start the process with Mr. Richardson and Ms. Stevens, so we are going to start pulling things together fairly quick. Appreciate you finalizing the job descriptions and getting those to us. We did pass those along as well. Counsel, anyone else with any comments or questions? Seeing none, Marcy, I'm sure we'll be talking again tomorrow, and thanks for taking the time this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Dixon, you want to call the roll?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Woods?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Schroes?
Aye.
Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Beulah?
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, the Councilman's recommendation to the State will be Marcy Austin as acting health officer effective September 1, 2020 is hereby approved. Agenda item number 12, business from the President. We do just have a couple of quick things that I want to speak to as far as business. I want to announce the adequate public facilities meeting is again scheduled for Tuesday, July 14th at 6:00 p.m. It is still up in the air whether it will be in person or virtual. We will go through Ms. Lynch and advise everyone promptly and let them know for sure. Our Audit Advisory Board meeting is also scheduled for August the 25th at 4:30 p.m. We will be scheduling the same, not quite sure whether we'll be in person or virtually that then. Looking forward to our tour of the new middle high school facility in Havering Grace tomorrow morning or tomorrow afternoon, would be attending with Dr. Bolson, Jamie Johnson, and Mr. Brown, Mr. Davis, and the project manager, Mr. Miller. Thursday evening, we have a, the sheriff has scheduled his Hartford County Sheriff's Community Board meeting at 5:00 p.m. We've been involved with this for about a year now, and it's a diverse group of community members, some from Hartford County Chamber of Commerce, our Hartford County faith-based community, NAACP, Caucus of African-American Leaders, the community advisory boards from all around the county, and a student member from Hartford County Public Schools. And the purpose of that board originally was set up to review recruiting and hiring practices for the sheriff's office and to make recommendations to the sheriff to include diversity and inclusion throughout. And then again, we will be taking our summer recess from legislative sessions starting this evening. We are scheduled to come back on September 1st. We are again, are not sure whether we will be meeting in the council chambers or whether we'll be continuing our virtual procedures here, but I want to, I want to take a minute and thank my council colleagues for all of their efforts to keep these meetings moving, our staff, the IT department, I've said this before, they've been fantastic to work with, and to go from a process that you have not done before to using it on a regular basis, I'm very proud of all of you. I want to thank Councilman Woods for all of his efforts to set up this little studio that we have that we've been coming to you live with for about two and a half months now, close to three months. Appreciate everyone's help, Ms. Harris's help, Ms. Dixon's help, Mr. Kearney's as well. I just appreciate everybody coming together to move this forward. And then the one thing that I want to emphasize is, even though we are not having legislative sessions through July and August, council members and their staff are working every day as usual, nothing's changed. You may not see us on Tuesday evenings, but if you need us, we're a phone call away. We'll be in and out of our office as normal, so I appreciate all of you. I hope you all have a great summer break, but I'm sure I'll be seeing you and talking to you every day anyway. And with that, Mr. Johnson.
Counsel President, I just want to thank the County Executive. Over this past week, I believe that there was a tag, but of something called Patriot Front, and he quickly had it removed and denounced the group, Patriot Front, which is a white supremacy group, and I just want to affirm that hate and intolerance will not be the way of this county, and we all should call out hate and intolerance. Now, in the words of Mr. John Malamo, I continue from last week, because this past week I've gotten significant pushback on my comments last week from a, what was called the cornerstone speech, which I'll reiterate, upon the great truth that the Negro is not equal to the white man and that slavery and subordination to the superior race is his natural and normal condition. Those aren't my words. Those were the words of the Confederate Vice President. So I've received significant pushback on that issue, and it's just bizarre to me that people would push back on those words when they're not my words. I'm just reading the quote from the Vice President. I firmly believe that most of us want to live upon each other's happiness and not each other's heartache. I believe that the world is, that the world can be free and beautiful for all of us, but injustice and inequality has poisoned us and has pushed us into hate and butchered. Our knowledge has made us cynical. Our cleverness has made us unkind, think too much, and feel too and feel too little. More than ever right now, we need humanity. More than cleverness, we need kindness. And without that, life is going to be lost for us. In Luke Chapter 17 is written, "The kingdom of God is within all men." Not one man, not a group of men, but all of us. We have the power to create happiness and love. We have the power to make life free and beautiful for all of us. But still, there are people out there that are against fulfilling that promise. They fight against going away with injustice, inequality, with their hate and intolerance. They hate words of reason, science, and progress. They hate a world that would lead to a more perfect union. So I close tonight by saying, let us all unite and become one and call out injustice, inequality, hate, and intolerance to build that more perfect union. I love you all. God bless you and good night.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Woods?
Thank you, Mr. President. As the Council President stated, our offices will definitely open all summer. There's a lot going on still, so keep watching for updates and anything that we send out. And please don't be afraid to reach out to us or contact us if you need anything. Also, I want to gradually false firehouse on having their food truck Thursday last week, and it'll also continue this week. It was quite successful. We're looking forward to having that again. Also, I want people to keep an eye out, look at False Firehouse's Facebook page and other outlets. We're planning a Fourth of July Independence Day celebration at the firehouse, probably starting in the evening around 3:00 p.m. or so. But we'll be open to the whole community, and I think it'll be a great event that we can celebrate our independence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Mr. Jan Giordano?
Thank you, Council President. Over the last few weeks, I think of advocacy and protesting. I am proud of the constituents of Hartford County. Thankfully, Hartford County has had a peaceful protest about police brutality and racism while honoring and remembering George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, Amon Arbery, and many others. It's nothing new to protest before the United States got into World War II. Protesters were seen in front of the White House on a daily basis. So, you know, citizens need to continue their First Amendment right peacefully. Remembering George Floyd's death, I think that's a day that's gonna live in infamy. So I hope if there's any other protests that they are peacefully. We hope everybody stays safe this summer. If you need to contact our office, we'll be there every day. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Jan Giordano. Mr. Schroed?
Thank you, Council President. And Councilman Woods, you reminded me that Jarrett Still is also following what they're doing in Fallston. And we also have a food truck festival every Wednesday. And I think this is our fourth one we're going into tomorrow. I believe last week there were seven food trucks, so they had a really lots of participants and the community is really coming out. So, you know, these fire companies, just like a lot of other nonprofits and other events, this is one way that they can raise a little bit of money. And, you know, it's nice to see the community come together. I wanted to express my condolences to my friend, the family of Bob Kinsley. As you may know, he's a well-known he's got a well-known construction business, but also he's been incredibly giving basically his entire life, extending from Gettysburg to York County, Baltimore County to Hartford County. Very philanthropic. And, you know, he was a conservationist and preservationist, and he just did so much good. And I know that such a wide area is gonna be at such a tremendous loss without having Bob around. So please keep his family, his employees, and dear friends in your thoughts and prayers. I know it's been a very interesting year so far. I just hope that we all come out of this much stronger. And hopefully, when we come back in September, we have progressed and we have this behind us. And, you know, for many different reasons, you know, I just hope that, you know, we can just move forward, get everything going again. And on the COVID front, one of the things that has brought out, I realize how devastating it is to the economy and people's lives and their health. But it has even shined a brighter spotlight on the lack of internet in Northern Hartford County. It was very sad this morning. My daughter signed on to be with her class at 12:30 right after lunch, and she was really excited about this moment and had a special outfit on and was psyched. And she's a social person. And she really misses her friends. And, you know, our internet was going in and out the whole time. It was, I felt really bad for her today. And I'm hoping that not only at the local level, but at the state level and at the federal level, along with all of our other partnerships and companies out there that can provide the service. I'm really hoping that we can finally get a solution to this, and we can provide everyone fast, reliable internet service in all of Hartford County. And, you know, it was just sad to see today. And I felt really bad for her, and she was really looking forward to it. She, you know, it's been tough on her to not be with her friends and teachers. You know, to have that happen, I was just sad. So hopefully, we can get with the next century. And, you know, I think that what I always knew all along and how bad it was, I wasn't the only one saying this, you know, since this all happened in March. The entire community and her classmates in Northern Hartford County especially, but then other rural parks and then other areas, you know. We can have all the best devices in the world, but if you don't have the connectivity, what's it really worth? I mean, schools can give everybody a free device, and it could be the best there is, but if you're not connected, really, how good is it? So, anyway, I do wish everyone the very best this summer. I will tell you on a positive note during the COVID, it has freed up a lot of the normal that we have, all the running around, the meetings. We haven't had that. We haven't had the sporting events. So I do think that it has allowed families to be with one another more. And I think that has been a positive. Maybe it's potentially the only positive. But I will say that it was kind of very refreshing to, you know, be able to enjoy some time I never had before with my daughter. I know other people have enjoyed that too. So I know things are hopefully going to get going. We're doing a really good job in Hartford County in Maryland. But as things start to open up and when we get busy and hectic again, just enjoy these moments that you have with the people you love and your friends. So that's how I want to end tonight, and have a great summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Schroed. Councilman Wagner?
I think tonight I'm just gonna bow out and move on. Have a good summer, be safe, and we will see you back when we're back. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Wagner. Councilman Buella?
Thank you, Council President. First of all, I would like to say that I'm deeply saddened by the shooting death of Rashad Brooks in Atlanta. I'm just deeply saddened. I'll just leave it at that. Also, I'd like to thank my fellow council members for the comments regarding the murder of George Floyd and all the issues that our nation is facing today. And also, I received, you know, some calls and spoke with some constituents. And I just want to say thank you to all you guys. It's all my councilmen and the constituents. It's very much appreciated. I also am very thankful that the protests here in Hartford County were peaceful. Mooting, violence, and destruction of property is wrong. And to me, no good, in my opinion, never really comes out of that. And I hope that we, I hope and pray that we never have those types of protests here in Hartford County. And I just, I love Hartford County. I love the citizens here. And peaceful protest, to me, is always the best course of action. And over the past couple of weeks, I've been speaking with constituents, local pastors, business owners, a couple of elected officials. I've been praying for discernment on what I should and could do as a councilman. I read the Ten Action Items for Better Hartford County, the letter that was delivered to Sheriff Gayler by the Hartford County NAACP, the Hartford County Caucus of African American Leaders, Bridge, Maryland, and Together We Will. I also read Sheriff Gayler's response to their letter. Several of the items have already are already in place or implemented by the sheriff's office. And I strongly believe that if our elected officials, community leaders, and the sheriff's office work together, we can make significant progress towards positive police reform. There are a couple of things, though, I want to be perfectly clear on. I'm not in favor of defunding the police. I do support banning chokeholds. But the thing that I feel as a councilman that I should do and could do immediately is to advocate for body cameras for all our deputies. Over the past, for the past three years, in its budget request to the county executive, Sheriff Gayler has requested funding for body cameras for all his deputies. The approximate startup cost is 1.3 million with an annual cost of approximately 700,000 to maintain the program. I'm looking forward to working with my fellow council members and the Glassman administration to see if we can find the necessary funding to provide body cameras for all our deputies here in Hartford County sooner rather than later. In another area, the faith-based community has played a significant role in this country's history as well as the civil rights movement. And I will continue to work with the local churches and pastors so that we can rise above racism. So that we can all live together in peace and that we can prosper together. I believe that so much of what we're experiencing today is a result of the hardness of our hearts and the lack of a personal relationship with God. We're trying, I mean, we're really trying to do things in our own power and in our own way. And we're leaving God out of our lives. And the evidence of that is everywhere. You see it everywhere. But my Lord reminds me, "You shall love the Lord, your God, with all your heart and with all your soul and with all your mind." This is the first and greatest commandment. And the second is like it. You should love your neighbor as yourself. I don't live in a fantasy land and believe that racism will be eliminated completely. But I do believe we should try to make meaningful progress and rise above it as best we can. Our nation is at a crossroads. We're hurting, we're angry, we're frustrated. But let's move forward and improve on the mistakes and pain of the past. And again, I say, as an elected official, I pledge to support, be part of the solution and to work with those who share common goal of equal rights and justice for all. And God bless everybody. Go all. You have a happy and fruitful summer. Look forward to seeing you all back one September. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Buella. Item number 14, comments and input from attending citizens. We have one signed up, Ms. Dixon?
Yes, Mr. President, John Malamo.
Malamo.
Good evening, sir. This is Council President Vincenti. Can I have your name and address for the record, please?
Sir, good evening to you and your colleagues. John P. Malamo, 2402 Eagle View Drive, Bel Air, Maryland. From the hearing examiner's recommended decision, paragraph six, page 25, preliminary plan shall be submitted through DACT to consolidate all the parcels comprised in the airport. The final platitude will be recorded in the Hartford County Land Records prior to building permit application. This is a condition of a special exception. Will this requirement be enforced? Section 267-88I, two for NZI, Hartford County Code. No more than 50% of the land area upon which the commercial operation is conducted may be located in the Ag District. The commercial operation includes all buildings, pavement areas, airport approach and landing paths, aircraft parking and storage areas. We determine from the exhibit marked Airport Operations Exhibit that only the property of 3538 Aldana would be used for approach and landing paths. No other land or airspace is involved. The FAA instrumented approach path is 11 miles long, getting in the forest hill area. The uninstrumented approach path is three miles long in a traffic pattern covering approximately 3,400 acres, mostly in the Ag District. Do you believe that this requirement will be enforced? We'll take up other code and special exception requirements related to approach and land paths in the next segment. Gentlemen, time to answer the question posed on 5/9/2020. Can any of you tell me why the Glassman administration continues to recognize Hartford County as an existing legal nonconforming use? Relying on my own review of the code, the transcript, and decision of zoning case 5814, my hypothesis is that the Hartford County Airport cannot operate as a functional general aviation airport and simultaneously meet requirements of the zoning code and the special exception. As a nonconforming use, the code would not apply, nor would the conditions of the special exception. Neither would any of the privileges of a special exception be available. After reviewing the four volumes of the transcript of zoning case 5814, I focused on testimony that the project presented and proved would not result in an operational and functional airport, but it would meet the code and conditions of the special exception. No judicial body offered any relief from code or conditions of a special exception. Obtaining a variant- Obtaining a variance which requires an applicant to prove hardship would be unlicensed, as any hardship would be self-composed. You are left to develop and test your own hypothesis on the matter. You have choices, as do we all. In your case, you can choose to be the Hartford County Council, the governing body of Hartford County that affects the lives of all the residents you serve, the zoning board of appeals to make binding land use decisions on matters that pound the lives and activities of Hartford County residents, or you can be silent, a rubber stamp, a go-along guide, a bawd, a humbug, you define yourselves. I wonder, is it wrong for citizens to expect good governance and effective government? When does the law apply? It appears to me that the answer and mantra in Hartford County on land use is, it doesn't matter. Finally, you really expect me to believe that the zoning board of appeals or the county administration will uphold the final decision of case 5814? Good night.
Good night, sir. Ms. Dixon, anyone else?
There was no one else signed up, Mr. President.
With no one else signed up, this will be adjourned. Good night, gentlemen.